Let me do that. Okay, good evening and welcome to the Arlington Democrats 2021 School Board Candidate Debate. I am Jill Caiasso, Chair of the Arlington Democrats, and I am delighted that so many of you were able to join us for this event, which is being recorded. We're excited to hear tonight from our two terrific candidates, Mary Cudera and Miranda Turner, Turner, in what is sure to be a lively exchange of ideas about important issues for Arlington schools. Now, before we get to our candidates, I wanted to take a moment to introduce the Arlington Dem sponsoring organization for this event, our Blue Families Team, which is one of the dynamic outreach conferences within Arlington Democrats. We're joined tonight by one of the Blue Families leaders, Josh Kaplowitz, and I'd like to turn the program over to him to provide you a quick overview of Blue Families in the hopes that many of you will consider joining this terrific group. Josh?
Thanks, Jill. Yeah, so as Jill said, Blue Families is an initiative of the Arlington Dems. We've been around for a little over four years and we are aimed at encouraging parents with kids and their kids to get to get more involved in progressive politics and in particularly electing, we're helping work to elect Democrats. So we try to make activism more social and and kid friendly. In the before times, we would have lots of postcard parties at people's houses, you know, kid friendly canvassing trips. And the good news is because of the fine work that Arlington has done getting vaccinated, we are we are poised to go back to in-person activities. So we are actually having a an outdoor COVID-safe, kid-friendly postcard party this Saturday at the at the Plaza in front of the brand-new, beautiful lover-run community center this Saturday from four to six. So come out and join us and we'll have postcards for you to write to help register voters in Virginia. And then we're going to start canvassing again. We like to do sort of kid-friendly, social canvassing trips. And then our premiere event every September is we have a a kid-friendly potluck picnic. And we are, we didn't, we couldn't have it last year, but we're hoping to do do that again. So hopefully I'll get a chance to put some links up in the chat so that you can you can click and find out more. But thanks, thanks again for letting me be, letting us be a co-sponsor and looking forward to the debate as much as you folks are.
Thanks so much, Josh, for that overview and really thanks to the entire Blue Families team for the incredible work that you do to make the political process more accessible to parents and their kids. And I see that the Blue Families link did make it into the chat, so copy that down, be sure to join. And if you're interested in talking to Josh directly about it, I'm sure he'd love to hear from you. You could email him at families@arlingtondemocrats.org or you could go to our website, arlingtondemocrats.org, and check out the Community Outreach section of our volunteer page, as well as all of the other great pages that we have on our website. I want to turn to our main event, but first I'd like to quickly review the debate rules so those of you at home know what to expect. These rules were shared with the candidates in advance of the event. We anticipate that the debate will last a little over an hour. We will begin with five-minute opening statements by each candidate, followed by a question-and-answer session. We received more than 50 questions in advance of this debate, which is an incredible response. It also, that means though, we are not going to get to every single question, unfortunately. But we have strived to select and craft questions that cover a wide waterfront of issues. In some cases, we've generalized or combined questions in order to cover more ground. And we've also tried to take into considerations questions that already were asked during our recent morning mug event, which is available for your viewing pleasure at the Arlington Democrats YouTube channel. The questions will be posed to candidates in a rotating first-response order, with each candidate having three minutes to answer each question. At the close of the question-and-answer session, each candidate will give a three-minute closing statement. I will keep time, and I am known for being a stickler, so the candidates are forewarned. With that housekeeping out of the way, let's get started. Per the virtual coin toss that we held a few minutes before the start of the event, Miranda will provide the first opening statement. Miranda?
Thank you, Jill, and good evening, everyone. I'm Miranda Turner, one of the two candidates for the Democratic endorsement for school board, and I'm really glad to be here with everybody virtually this evening. Just for a quick introduction on me, I am a lawyer. I have three kids and I live in South Arlington in the Green Valley neighborhood. I grew up in the area and my mom and her sister and brother are all Wakefield grads. I've lived here myself since 2014 and I've been an APS parent since 2015 with children at both the Option and the Neighborhood Schools. I've been active with the Drew PTA since we formed as part of our new neighborhood school, beginning in 2019. I'm also a lifelong Dem and I never thought that I'd be seeking elected office, but you can count me among the folks inspired in recent years to jump in and run for something, as they say. I've followed and cared about school issues for years at this point, including the 2018 boundary process that did make Drew a full neighborhood school. The issue for me, though, this year has been return to schools. I've been advocating in favor of in-person instruction based on science and safety since last year. That meant for me in April 2020, I was emailing about how other kids and my kids were going to access their teachers, because this was an equity issue right from the start. It meant over the summer, I was asking about plans for meals so that our neighborhood could make sure kids were getting access, including as close to home as my own basement, where we had a pod with some other children from Drew for my third grader. And it meant looking at the evidence and advocating to put in place mitigation like masking, ventilation, and to open the doors for children who wanted to come in person, particularly in the fall when cases were low and when studies were starting to show that opening the schools did not increase spread within a community. When the return dates kept moving, including for my daughter, I emailed to say that every week, every day mattered to kids wanting to get back to school. I still believe that, and I think it shows in how I've been pushing this spring for more days for kids who want more days, for clear quarantine policies that make sense and don't sweep in more kids than safety would dictate, or for more days. Because again, those days matter to our kids. This advocacy is what I've believed the whole time, that school could be done safely and was important enough to try. And this is how I would have approached the issue as a board member, safety, but with the clear view that school is critical to our kids and we should move mountains to make it happen. I was the second candidate to join this race, and when I stepped in, there was no conversation about return to school happening. These issues are now at the fore where I think they belong. I understand that that between Mary and I, we've got some agreement, the school board should have voted on these issues. We have some concerns with the way things were handled. I think it's great that we're now on the same page with respect to those issues. But at the end of the day, I'm interested in answers this spring, this school year, and this fall for our kids that put them first and serve them well. This is the most important issue of our lifetimes that the school board has in their hands, how to deliver quality education in a pandemic, at the end of a pandemic, and after a pandemic. But there are going to be other issues too, enrollment, boundaries, facilities, budget. We're going to be a 30,000-student school district and we need to plan for that. I think we'll get some breathing room this year in terms of enrollment, let's use it. We have to build up, we're going to have more boundary processes, probably including as early as this fall. We have to do them right so we don't find ourselves in the same place after only three years. That's what's happening with Drew right now, and those of us who advocated in that process saw it coming. We also need to figure out a path forward on the Career Center, what happens to the schools already at that site. And the budget is going to drive a lot of this. How do we support a strong APS? How do we increase our capacity for our student, our student body that's growing? How do we deal with new facilities and construction costs? Are we getting value out of our administrative overhead and are we paying our teachers what they deserve? Fundamentally, this may mean a conversation about whether schools need more support from the county. All of this has to be approached through an equity lens as well. In particular, identifying barriers to student success and working to remove them. So what's the role of the school board in all this? It's the oversight body for APS. That means things like vetting assumptions, evaluating alternatives, challenging conclusions, and asking questions and following up. I'm a lawyer and what I bring to the table is the ability to synthesize information, analyze issues, come to sound conclusions, and persuade. We need more of that from the school board in order to have a strong school system. School, but excuse me, school board members have to dig into the weeds sometimes, too. They have to engage and hear all corners of the community, including those that may not step forward as readily. Fundamentally, the school board should look out for those who APS is built to serve, our students. I'm here to talk with you tonight and I will be asking for your vote to serve in that role. Thank you.
Thank you, Miranda. Next, we will hear from Mary. Mary?
Thank you, Jill. Good evening, everyone. Thank you to the Arlington Democrats for organizing this event and to all of you for participating. When it comes to education, we have a lot to be proud of in Arlington. For example, more than two-thirds of our teachers hold advanced degrees, which is well above the state and national averages. We rank second in the state for employing a high percentage of National Board-certified teachers. Four out of five of our students go on to higher education after graduation at higher rates than the state average across all races, income levels, and disability status. If we're honest with ourselves, however, and we're truly committed to the success of all of our students, then we need to admit some shortcomings in our schools and double down on fixing them. For example, only 10% of Arlington students are black, yet black students account for more than 40% of students who've been suspended multiple times. More than 50% of English learners at some language levels in our high schools are chronically absent. Outside researchers found that 90% of instruction we're providing to English learners in our middle and high schools didn't have enough academic rigor. Between 20 and 30% of APS students are identified gifted, but we don't have nearly the staffing we need to appropriately engage and challenge them. Our students with disabilities are underrepresented in advanced courses and we haven't yet met our goal for including these students in general education classrooms. Twice in the past few years, we've opened multimillion-dollar school buildings that lacked basic accessibility and safety features for students with disabilities, which is a moral, legal, and financial wrong. Financially, we've run up a tab we simply can't afford. By 2024, the gap between APS expenditures and revenues is projected to grow to more than $100 million. APS staff have not had a full step and cost of living increase in more than a decade. We've fallen behind other local school systems at several points on the pay scale. What's going to keep our talented educators teaching in Arlington? Add to these concerns the very immediate and urgent need to safely and fully reopen our schools and deal with the aftershocks of this pandemic. And it's exactly because we face these multiple challenges that I want this job, and here's why. I've worked for more than 25 years in education and I want to put my weak, my shoulder to the wheel to serve my community in Arlington. I've seen what's working in public education across the country and I have creative solutions to improve our schools. I would bring to the job my experience as a former classroom teacher, curriculum developer, a nonprofit education executive, a parent of two students at Kenmore Middle School, and a community volunteer, most recently as an officer in the County Council of PTAs. In addition to my experience, I bring my values to the school board. I value honesty and transparency, showing my work and explaining my positions on the issues. I value curiosity and humility, listening carefully to all voices, continually learning, and being ready to admit when I've made a misstep or learned something that changes my point of view. I value healthy skepticism and continuous improvement, always questioning, reflecting, and working tirelessly to get better at everything we do. I value accountability, our elected leaders' accountability to the public they serve, and public education's accountability to our students and families, because I believe that a great education can indeed change the course of a student's life. Last but certainly not least, I value equity, which involves ensuring that every single student has the right level of support and challenge in their learning and dismantling the policies and practices that have routinely disadvantaged certain students. I'm deeply troubled by rhetoric spread by Fox News and other outlets that suggests equity in education means dumbing down or settling for less. I'm disturbed that what this falsely insinuates about BIPOC students and students from lower-income families, and I'm disturbed because it encourages a divisive scarcity mentality. If it were true that we have to compete for resources and attention, it would mean accepting the idea that our schools can only serve certain kinds of kids. That's an idea that does not belong in Arlington and it definitely doesn't live up to the mission and promise of public education. If you share these values and if you believe my experience will be an asset for the school board, then I hope you'll support my candidacy. In return, you'll get a school board member who will work doggedly on all that's ahead of us over the next four years. By January of 2026, I want us to be able to look back and say that not only did we dig out of this pandemic and the pain and loss that it created for so many in our community, I want us to be able to say that we built something better in its wake. We can build a system where every child at every income level is known, loved, challenged, and inspired, where every child in our charge graduates with the knowledge and skills they'll need to thrive in their adult lives and participate fully in our democracy. In four years' time, I want us to be so proud of the long way we've come together. I know we can get there and I'm asking for your vote as a first step on that journey.
Thank you very much. Okay, we will move on to the question-and-answer portion of the debate. As a reminder, the candidates each have five, three minutes to respond to each question. Miranda, because she won the coin toss, will respond first to our initial question, which is as follows. Focusing on equity, what specific measures or policies do you propose to close persistent gaps in educational attainment among APS students?
Thank you. I'm going to start by pointing out that return to school is the biggest equity issue. The ACLU said back last fall that remote learning has been an abject failure for many of the students and families who rely on public education the most. Students with disabilities, English learners, students of color, the youngest students, students who are homeless, students from low-income communities. I know we're doing better in APS at serving these students. I know we are trying to reach them. But we should be opening the doors for those students who want to come in right now, this spring, without, without giving up on this school year. We should be doing everything we can to help overcome barriers that those children may have. We're not going to be able to overcome them all. I understand that, but we should be trying harder. We should not be giving up on this school year. Moving forward, there is data on on equity issues and I think we should be looking at it. Right now, there's data on who is choosing to come back in person. Dr. Duran himself has said in-person learning is better. He says in-person learning does not work well for vulnerable students. He knew that last summer. And now we've got data on who's moving back to in-person instruction and we should use that. If students at certain schools are moving back to in-person instruction at higher rates and they belong to vulnerable communities, let's take a look at what those schools are doing to help their kids get back in the door, because that could be informative for all of our schools for serving these populations. But moving forward, I think the most direct way to address equity in schools is to focus on the basics, student literacy across all demographic groups and across all schools. We should be taking evidence-based literacy curriculums and applying them across all schools in a consistent manner so that it doesn't turn on being at the right school for you to get a good foundation in literacy. We should be looking at data on who is being, who is finding themselves in our accelerated courses, at our graduation rates, and how we're doing on inclusion for students with disabilities. And we should be looking at that data over time, consistently measured, reported openly. The goal is what Erin Gregory has said, which is equity is achieved when you can't predict a student outcome by their membership in a particular demographic group. We don't get to that place if we are not tracking our data, looking at it by demographic group, and holding everyone, including the school board, accountable for seeing progress on these measures. I just want to add one last thing, the Green Valley Civic Association FOIA data out of Drew a couple of years ago, when the Montessori program was still there, and it showed big disparities between the neighborhood school and the Montessori program in terms of test scores. I think it's notable, I think it's telling, that not only did those disparities exist, but the Civic Association had to go and get the data. We need to be more open about these issues, we need to face them, and we need to make sure we are improving upon them in order to best serve our students.
Thank you, Miranda. Now we will hear from Mary. Again, the question is, focusing on equity, what specific measures or policies do you propose to close persistent gaps in educational attainment among APS students?
Now, this is, this is an urgent question, and I will observe that while the pandemic certainly laid bare a lot of inequities in our system, we know, if we're honest with ourselves, that equity has been a problem in APS, as it has been in other public school systems for a long time, because the system was inherently designed to privilege certain kinds of students and disadvantage others. What I would say, I think, are the big-ticket items over the next four years for the school board and APS leadership to attend to first in terms of academic achievement. We have to make sure that we are using the very best research-based Tier One curriculum and interventions for all of our students. I'm very encouraged to see in this year's budget that we have funding in place for a new English Language Arts curriculum, which will emphasize structured literacy, which is a different and and really evidence-based approach that will work better for many of our students with disabilities, and particularly good about working with, working for students with dyslexia. We will have better reading screeners, we'll have a math screener to look, to diagnose, you know, difficulties in math at additional levels in elementary school. So all of that moves in the right direction, which is saying we have to have the right curriculum and teaching strategies in place for those students. I am also a big believer, however, that school culture is a big, big factor in student engagement and achievement. I believe that kids learn best and take risks best in their learning when they're in an environment where they feel safe and they feel valued and they feel supported. We know for a lot of our kids, when we look at our school climate survey data, and you talk to, when you talk to families, that a lot of our students aren't feeling that way. They don't feel like their culture and their experiences are valued and reflected in their school community. They're not feeling like they're, the curriculum that they're being taught reflects their culture and their background. So there's a long way to go in improving school culture with things like implicit bias training for the adults in the school building, culturally-relevant curriculum, and then practices that dismantle systems that are disadvantaging students. We have the data that shows that our discipline practices and rates of referral to law enforcement are discriminatory. And it's time for us to take a look at how we make those changes so that every student comes to school feeling like they are seen, like they belong, like, like they are welcome there and they can do their best work. So I think the academics and the school, school culture piece really have to go hand in hand.
Great, thank you very much. We will move on to our next question, which is as follows. Do you have a plan or opinion about the changes in math instruction proposed by the Virginia Department of Education? We will hear from Mary first.
This has been a hot topic on the campaign, the campaign trail, and I think that, you know, it's received a lot of coverage in the press. And I don't know that it's completely well-understood, so I'm going to back up and just share a little bit about my understanding of the Virginia Math Pathways Initiative. What I understand about this program is, is that it is an effort at the state level to try to take a step back from the traditional math curriculum, which really hasn't changed since, since we were in school and probably since our parents were in school. And I think it's important that every once in a while we look at our curriculum and we're kind of doing a gut check. Is this still relevant to the needs of, of, of the world of work and to students going on to higher education? I think that kind of reflection and examination is really healthy. The initiative that Virginia is undertaking is doing in partnership with many other states, and it's also doing it in partnership with institutions of higher education. So that gives me comfort as someone who works in education to see that it's part of a larger collaborative effort, and it's not something that Virginia's Department of Ed is going off and kind of doing on its own. What I like about the Virginia Math Pathways Initiative is that it's looking at that curriculum and it's saying, you know what? In the 21st century, it's really, really important that all of our students, no matter what their future holds, have a really solid understanding of data analysis and statistics. And if we think about the past couple of years in the life of our country in terms of looking at public health data and statistics, looking at polls in the last presidential election, it's really hard to imagine that our students won't need this kind of data literacy and statistical analysis as, as a real 21st-century skill. So I'm really pleased to see that being elevated in the curriculum. The piece of this that I think is, and I should say, the other thing that gives me, that gives me peace is that for students that want to move into advanced careers in STEM, the options to take pre-calculus and calculus and the kind of traditional, very rigorous, advanced math, that pathway still exists, that's not going away. I think the piece of it that's controversial for many people and might cause a little unease is the idea that in eighth through 10th grade, there's this proposal that we're going to do with accelerated math classes and that there's, there's going to be no more standard and accelerated, but all students will be taught in the same classroom. I, I'd like to learn more about the Department of Ed's rationale for doing that, because I think that the curriculum shift can happen and you could still offer an advanced option of that new curriculum for students in eighth to 10th grade. They would simply be digging in deeper. They would be demonstrating their knowledge in perhaps a little bit more complex way. So that piece of it, I think, needs, needs a little more careful study. But if, in fact, it is the case that all students will be grouped together, what I imagine will happen in practice is what happens in our fourth and fifth grade classrooms in a lot of elementary schools where there's flexible grouping. And every quarter or every unit, teachers are able to see what their students know about this and then flexibly shuffle students into different groups. And I think that could happen in the middle.
Thank you very much. Okay, we are going to hear then next from Miranda. And the question is, again, do you have a plan or opinion about the changes in math instruction proposed by the Virginia Department of Education?
Thank you. I think it's true, as Mary mentioned, that this is not well-understood, and there has been a lot in the news. But I think that there's a lot of concern on the part of parents. I've been hearing about it and, and I understand why. The goal of our, of our school system in APS is to provide pathways to success for every student. New paths and stats and data, I think that's a good thing. But for students who excel at math, their pathway may be faster, and I'm not sure that we should be taking that away. I think parents are concerned that accelerating at 11th is too late to allow room for advanced math students to push as far as they can push. I think they're worried that the prep for calculus would be too compressed. The devil is always going to be in the details, and again, this is new and not well-understood. But I think the real concern is this is going to result in students who are advanced in math not being met where they are, not being pushed as far as they can go for our more advanced students. Another concern I have is how this would actually be implemented in the classroom. Teachers differentiate, and that's one of the things they're trained in and they're excellent at. But without accelerated classes, the range is going to be broader. The more a teacher is stretched thin to meet a wider range of abilities, it's possible that that results in less time for the kids to learn at their level within the classroom. I think this is different. I think, I think this effort is inspired by the effort to untrack or detrack, and I think that that is a very important goal, because tracking has been identified as really significant when it comes to marginalizing students and of, of certain demographic groups and shutting them out of opportunities. So I think that, again, the goal may be a good one here, but this sort of gets back to how we need data. We need to understand where our student groups are and we need to understand what, if what we're seeing is, is appropriate in terms of how students are accessing and succeeding in accelerated tracks. Fundamentally, I think these issues come up from time to time in terms of eliminating or, or reducing accelerated options. I watched a school board candidate debate from last year, which is what I do for fun now. And I think that there was a question last year about eliminating AP and IB courses. I saw the school board candidates all, you know, acknowledge the tension between providing pathways for students to accelerate and realizing that historically and today, those pathways haven't always been accessible to all students. But the desire, and there's a desire to right that wrong, but I think the way to do it is not to eliminate acceleration. I think it's to make sure we're giving kids what they need to succeed. And if accelerated math is their path, then let's make sure that that can happen equitably across all of our students within APS.
Great, thank you, Miranda. We will move to the third question, which is, what are your views about starting a youth advisory council or holding youth-led town halls? Miranda, you will start, you will respond first.
Sure, I, I think that's a really interesting idea, and I think that it's Fairfax that has a student rep on its school board that rotates through. And, and to me, that's a really neat opportunity for a student to sort of step forward into a more adult role and to, you know, become accustomed to, to being in that, in that world. We had a forum on, we had a forum, gosh, we've had so many, with the Chamber of Commerce. And one of the things that they were asking about is preparation for the professional world and soft skills, which includes, you know, poise, presentation, being able to address a large group of individuals who are older than you and more experienced than you in many instances, and learning to move in that world, and this would be a nice opportunity for it. I think it's also a great way for us as a, a school system to hear the voices of our kids. I know that I am hearing voices of children through their parents right now on return-to-school issues, but there are many, many more issues that, that kids in APS have come through for. A couple of years ago, I think it was a student at Washington and Liberty, Washington Lea at the time, who wrote a letter that got a ton of attention from adults in Arlington on diversity in schools. And it was such a cool thing to see him step forward and take that leadership role and really make a lot of the adults in the room or in the county think about it. So I think, you know, kids are our future, and it sounds trite to say, but they are. And involving them in that way would be something that I would definitely be interested in exploring.
Great, thank you very much. Now we'll hear from Mary. Again, the question is, what are your views about starting a youth advisory council or holding youth-led town halls?
Yeah, I mean, our students are the ultimate stakeholders of our public education system. So their voices have to figure into decision-making, strategic planning, vision-setting, I mean, all the important work of where our school system is now and where we want it to go. In my work-life in education, I have been continually impressed by the ways students step up and participate in the life of their school communities and, and in their school districts in all kinds of different ways. So some of the things that I have seen are students at some high schools who serve on hiring committees for staff, students who give input into staff performance evaluations, students who are part of school improvement committees. You know, and then the list kind of goes on and on. on and on. But students know what's going on in their school, and they care about what's going on in their school. And when students, together with families and staff, are co-creating the school environment and working together, all pulling in the same direction to improve their schools, there's a sense of shared ownership and shared responsibility that is really powerful. And when I talk to school principals and other places, they will tell me that the students in those settings are quicker to kind of reach out to each other and confront conflicts or bad behavior or things that come up, because they value the school culture. They helped make it, and they're the ones that will reach out to their friends and say, hey, that's not okay. We don't do that here. And so I think, you know, those examples are really wonderful to me, and not only because they have the strengthening effect on everybody in the school or the district, but because those are life skills. And we want to teach kids to be advocates. We want to teach them to be problem solvers and agents of change, and that doesn't happen if we treat them in this very passive receptive way in their school lives. And I think that can start as early as elementary school in very age-appropriate ways. So yeah, I would definitely be favor of looking at more avenues for student agency and student engagement.
Great, thanks, Mary. We will move on to our fourth question, which is as follows. How would you improve upon the APS budget process? Mary, you will respond first.
I spent some of the early days of my candidacy reading through the APS budget, and I published a series of articles about what I saw in the budget, and I got into the point of looking at line items and questioning certain expenditures and increases. But my larger concern was about the budget process itself, and I wrote about that. You can find it on my campaign website. What I would change about the budget process that I think would strengthen it are several things, and I can't claim ownership of these ideas, because they're actually ideas that the Budget Advisory Council raised in its end-of-year report last year. And unfortunately, leadership within APS didn't choose to implement many of these recommendations. But one of them would be a more intensive role for the Budget Advisory Council earlier and throughout the budget process. So the way that it's working right now, the Budget Advisory Council really isn't brought in on the meat of the budget until it gets presented by the superintendent to the school board. And at that point, there have been multiple opportunities earlier in that process where they could have weighed in and contributed good ideas about cost-cutting and efficiencies and ideas to realize new revenue, but those opportunities are lost. So that's one change that I would make. Another change that I wrote about that I feel really strongly about is that some other school districts have a separate process from the budget, separate entirely, and it's called in a lot of districts academic return on investment. And what they're doing is looking carefully at all of their investments, and they're looking at criteria about why did we purchase this or invest in this? What good did we anticipate would come of it? And when we look at data, are we really reaping the gains that we thought we would get? And they're intentionally doing that separate from the budget process, because they want it to be an instructionally-driven decision. What concerns me is a lot of times we see things come up in the budget in tier one, two, tier three cuts that have instructional impact, but they're done for completely financial reasons. They're not done because of their instructional merits or disadvantages. So I think we need to separate out those steps, involve our Budget Advisory Council more fully, and then in the budget document itself, I think we need a more balanced presentation of proposed increases and cuts that really lays out the pros and cons for each. If you read the budget document, it's not really clear. Sometimes APS is arguing for a certain cut, and sometimes they're arguing against it. I think that would give the school board and other members of the community a much clearer understanding of the trade-offs of particular decisions that they're making in the budget. I think all of those would help us be better stewards of public funds, and we need to do all of those things before we would go to the county and ask for an increase in revenue. I agree that shouldn't be off the table, but as a school board member, I would hesitate to go and ask for more money until I felt like I was getting value out of every penny.
Great, now we will hear from Miranda. Again, the question is, how would you improve upon the APS budget process?
Thank you. I think a budget is about your priorities, and what you put into your budget reflects your priorities. To me, we should prioritize teachers and student-facing roles in small class sizes. That means we should pay our teachers well, we should pay our staff well, we should pay them both what they're worth and enough to attract good talent. There's been a lot said recently about how APS is falling behind the region in terms of pay at certain steps, and I think that's something we really want to look at. And then I think as a matter of what's right and how we treat our teachers, we should try to get back to a step and a pull-up every year. Within the budget, all of those costs are a very, very large percentage of the overall budget. It's around 80%. And if we're going to do what's right by our staff, that doesn't leave a lot of wiggle room left. It's only about 20% where you can identify specific things to cut, and you can start picking at the details. But I think we need to take a hard look at our admin overhead costs. The trajectory that we're on is, over the past two years, central office spending has grown by 22%, and school spending has been about 4% in elementary and maybe somewhere around eight in secondary. Now, it's possible that we're building back from the recession, and I know our central office folks work hard, and I think they're stretched thin, but we need to really be looking carefully at whether we're getting efficient use of our dollars, because it's a lot of dollars and it's growing in a faster clip than our student-facing positions. I think after we look at all of that, then we may need to have a conversation with the county about how we are positioning APS to succeed within the overall county budget. We get 47%. Is that enough? Is this enough to fund the type of school system we want and the growth that we're expecting to have, the new facilities that we're still going to need? And fundamentally, let's have a conversation about how we can stop doing this every year, because what winds up happening is what happened this year. We have a series of really painful cuts that are put on the table, middle school sports, late buses. Late buses have an equity impact, and I think everyone can recognize that sports and after-school activities after the year our kids have had is something that's really, really important. Those shouldn't be tier-one cuts, and this year they were. Then APS went to the county and asked for more money, and fortunately, we got more money from the federal government, and I think that things are going to shake out. But let's not do that to our community and to our kids. I think we should approach the budget based on the revenue that we have, but really consider whether we need more revenue to have the type of school system that we all expect for our students and for our community, because APS is something we're all really proud of.
Thanks very much, Miranda. We are then going to move to our fifth question, which is, are you concerned about learning losses from virtual instruction? If so, how should APS address this concern? If not, why are you not concerned? And Miranda, you will respond first to this.
Sure. Thank you. Yes, I am concerned about this, and I think that the first and foremost and most direct way to address learning loss is to stop it now and to get kids back in school in person as soon as we can for as many kids who want to go, for as many kids as we can accommodate this school year. And I think within that context, we focus on the basics: math, reading, handwriting, actual writing on paper, which is something that my kids have not gotten enough of this year, and things that are social for the younger kids. My son's in kindergarten. He needs to learn how to stand in line and take turns, have conversations, and play games. This is the sort of stuff that we could be getting back to right now, and it's more than just academic. It's about our kids' mental well-being. It's about their social connections. It's about their emotional health. I think when we talk academics, our teachers know how to do this. They are trained at scaffolding. They're trained at differentiation, and they are used to a variety of levels within a classroom. We need to get out of their way and let them do their thing, but we should be focusing on small class sizes. We should be focusing on summer school. I know that we are paying a summer school bonus to teachers to attract them to staff that fully, and I really hope that that works out the way we intended to, because it's so important to start right away. I think we are going to get there. I do think learning loss is a big concern, but it's something that our teachers know how to do. This year, it may be a difference as to the scale of the problem and the breadth of the range among students, and we will need more resources, we'll need more time, and I do think it's going to be really important for the school board and the superintendent to be focused on what the data shows. We all saw the reports over the past year from Dr. Duran periodically looking at scores, breaking them out by demographic group, looking at grades. That same data should be reported at the same intervals, year over year, quarter over quarter, broken out by demographics, and let's take a look, let's put it out into the open and make sure we're seeing progress. And I think that that's how we should start addressing these issues and bringing our kids back from the pandemic.
Thank you. Next, we're going to hear from Mary. Again, the question is, are you concerned about learning losses from virtual instruction? If so, how should APS address this concern? And if you are not concerned, why not?
I'd rephrase the question to say that I'm concerned about our kids. Their academics is one piece of them, and yes, I'm concerned about their academics, but I'm concerned about the whole child. As someone who has been a teacher and someone who's worked in education, we know that kids can't learn unless their basic needs are being met. We know they can't learn unless they're environments where they feel safe and capable and valued. So for me, before we can attend to kids' academic needs, we have to make sure that all of our kids are having their basic needs met, and that means collaboration between school staff and county staff on basic needs like food, like shelter, like access to mental health and other kinds of healthcare services. What I think needs to happen is when kids come back into school, when we're pulling out of this, we need to attend to, sort of do, an inventory of basic needs. We need to get to know our students and their families and understand what's been happening for them in a lot of school districts. That's been happening through home visits, which go above and beyond the kind of traditional back-to-school questionnaire that a lot of us are used to filling out. And we need mental health screeners. This is different from the social-emotional learning screener that APS has put in the budget for next year. A mental health screener is looking at incidence of depression and anxiety and other mental health conditions, and we know that for about half of those who have lifelong mental health problems, those present before age 14. We knew that before the pandemic. So mental health screening is good practice, not just coming out of the pandemic, but is good practice for all of our years ahead. When we have done those things and when we understand childhood trauma and trauma-informed practice, we set ourselves up and our kids up to be in an environment where then we can attend to their academic needs. On those academic needs, we're going to need really great diagnostic screening tools to help us know exactly where each child is at in terms of knowledge and skills, and then we want to design learning experiences that meet them at the right level of support and the right level of challenge. We talked about this earlier, but then it's going to be really important to have the right curriculum and the right interventions that are research-based to work with those kids. The last thing that I would say that I hope all of us will keep in mind is I think we need to be really careful about how we talk about this with our kids. And if we are using terms like learning loss or academic deficits or kids who have fallen behind, we are sending a message to kids about, we see them as what they lack. And what I want us to remember is that so many of our kids have showed incredible determination and resilience and perseverance through this time, that I want us and I want their teachers to recognize the strengths that they have exhibited during this really difficult chapter and draw on those strengths even as we work to build up areas that need attention.
Great, thank you very much. We will move on to our sixth question, which is, how will you address overcrowding at certain schools? And Mary, you are up first.
This is the $64,000 question for school board candidates in many years past, and unfortunately, it will be the $64,000 question for a few years to come, because when we look at enrollment projections over the next decade, we're not out of the woods in terms of growth of our student population. We'll add about 3,000 more students before the decade's out, before we begin to see that taper off. So capacity issues are a very real thing. I think one of the things that's encouraging to me is that I'm hearing from county folks and APS planners that the data that they're using to project enrollment growth, they feel is getting better and better, and that collaboration between county and APS has improved so that we can forecast a little more accurately perhaps than we have in the past. The other good news item is that we have really good tools in our toolbox to deal with our capacity and enrollment issues. We had last year, a full year ago now, APS staff presented to the school board 14 design studies, which looked at current APS-owned sites and ways that those could be expanded or completely rebuilt to add capacity to our system. In addition to that, in November 2019, the county manager sent a letter to APS, and it outlined 25 county-owned sites that could also be on the table for future APS seats as needed. Obviously, in that case, there would need to be really careful coordination with the county, because a lot of those sites house current county programs, but I think it presents some exciting possibilities about ways that we could co-locate programs and county and school facilities in ways that I've seen in other districts across the country. So all to say, I think that we can get there, and we can get out of our capacity crunch. We're just going to have to be judicious about which of those tools we apply, and we're going to need to move quickly so that we aren't caught unawares.
Great, thank you, Mary. Next, we will hear from Miranda. Again, the question is, how will you address overcrowding at certain schools?
Sure. I will start with an example, which I think is the one that comes to mind, because it was the subject of a meeting just a week or two ago, which is Drew and Abingdon. The South Arlington schools are overcrowded generally, but unevenly so. Abingdon is well over 100%, and Drew is around 75%. And like I mentioned at the beginning, there were some of us who advocated for a different outcome in 2018, because we saw the writing on the wall with the boundaries that were eventually drawn and saw that it would be difficult to address Drew's boundary and drawing as many students to utilize the many seats that are there at this great neighborhood school with beautiful facilities under the boundaries that the school board was drawing. So the solution was, instead of dealing with it then, to put in this pilot program with voluntary transfers. And I am here all day to tout the benefits of Drew, and I've spoken to a couple of Abingdon families who were considering the pilot program, but only 12 chose to take it in the end, and that's not going to do it. And I think Reed Goldstein said as much. So they're going to have to look at that as early as this fall. That's three years later, and this is something that caused a lot of turmoil in the community, as do boundary processes countywide, and we're going to have to go through it again only three years later, because good decisions weren't made at the time, and some of the data was there to tell us that we were headed in the wrong direction, and we headed that way anyway. So I think we need to do better with boundaries, and I am hopeful that we can take some of the community tension out of it by really respecting our neighborhood schools, but understanding that we are going to have to deal with this as a community. And I think that we need to address the situation where we do have the history and the housing patterns that we have in this county, and we need to understand that we've got to take account of kids who are keeping communities together, close to their school, walkable schools, in order to both keep those communities unified and also minimize transportation costs, frankly. And then I think we should take a look at demographics after that to try to do a little bit better at moving towards the county average for some of these schools, where we do see a huge disparity between the percentage of low-income students and other demographic measures at some schools, and a very, very different story at other schools. So I think that there are ways to approach it, but fundamentally, we need to do a good job so that communities aren't going through this year after year after year, and we owe that, I think, to the students who don't want to move schools over and over again. And I think that we want to make sure we're approaching boundaries in a way that doesn't feel inadequate and that really moves us toward truly integrated communities that are reflective of their neighborhoods.
Great, thank you for that. We will move on to the seventh question, which is, do you support use of the concurrent method of learning at APS in fall 2021? Miranda, you will respond first.
Sure. So I think right now, it's really, really difficult to say what we should and shouldn't support, because I don't think we have enough information on, frankly, what families are interested in and what they're going to be looking at for the fall, and information is changing all the time. I personally was pushing for a survey earlier this spring so that APS could understand where families stood, since the last time we selected a return-to-school option was back in October, and circumstances have changed so much, both with respect to vaccine availability, with respect to case rates, and with respect to the consensus around the safety of schools. So the fact that we haven't had a survey in so long really doesn't leave the system with a lot of information about where parents are, and I think we're seeing that, because Dr. Duran's email earlier this week says the overwhelming majority of families are choosing to return in person. Now, he has said that we're going to have a virtual academy, if you will, instead of doing concurrent learning, except at the AP and IB levels, and that, I think, is a way to proceed, but it's not clear to me that we've got the information to understand how many families really want to take advantage of a virtual to understand how many families really want to take advantage of a virtual academy. And frankly, how many families, how many students would need to take advantage of concurrent AP and IB courses? Most AP and IB students are going to be eligible for the vaccine by the fall and will have had the opportunity to take it. AP and IB courses are also incredibly complex, and their curriculums can't be truncated. And and we can't slow it down so that our kids are ready to sit for those tests. So I think there's a lot of different moving parts here. And I also want to say, I understand that some students with disabilities are interested in pursuing concurrent in order to stay with their school communities. It's also a different story for option school programs. How are you going to come back after a year away from Spanish immersion? When you haven't done concurrent, you've been in a virtual academy with no Spanish instruction. So I think all of these are difficult issues, and I really wish that APS had undertaken more of a survey instead of asking parents to make their choices now so that we could have had slightly better information.
Great. Thank you for that. Next, we will hear from Mary. Again, the question is, do you support use of the concurrent method of learning at APS in fall 2021?
Yeah, I answer this question, I think about this question wearing my teacher hat, right? So when I was a classroom teacher, the the kinds of activities I would have designed for in-person instruction are different than the activities that I would design for virtual instruction. Each of those media mediums have different, you know, different features and different benefits. And so it strikes me as as really challenging for a teacher to be able to do both at once and do them well and take full advantage of of, you know, the the features and techniques for each one. When I talk to teachers in APS about their experiences with concurrent instruction, they're confirming that assumption that I made based on my own teaching experience. And what they're telling me is it has been extremely difficult, and they don't feel like they're serving either group very well. So all of that, all of that leads me to conclude that concurrent is not the best that we can do and that we need something better for the fall for kids that are not able or do not choose to come back in person. The concern, you know, the the bit of hesitation I feel around that is frankly, from parents I've heard from whose kids will need to stay at home for medical reasons next year. And they're terribly worried that without concurrent instruction, their kids will be cut off from the life of their homeschool community. And that is a concern that I I really appreciate and that that I feel too. I'm very worried about that. I don't think concurrent instruction is the only way to keep kids connected to their schools. I think that we can think of a lot of creative ways to make sure that those kids still feel integrated into the life of their school and that they're brought in, you know, to have interactions with their in-person peers. What worries me is that I don't know that anyone is at APS is putting a lot of thought at this point into what those creative solutions would be to keep those students connected. And if the announcement by the superintendent earlier this week about abandoning social distancing for next fall is any indication, I'm a little worried that there's a lack of of forethought and careful planning and budgeting for next fall at all happening. I think that decision that was made to abandon social distancing protocols for the fall may in fact change the change the decisions that some families have made to go back in person. We may see some people pull back. But the reason I bring it up here is because it reflects kind of a larger concern I have that the response of some of our leadership in APS is like, oh, well, we're not sure if we can figure that out. And it's really hard, and so we're not going to do it. And and I have that concern for our students who need to remain virtual, that they will not receive that kind of the kind of careful consideration that I think they need to keep them connected to their home communities and to design a really great virtual learning experience for them.
Great. Thank you, Mary. We will move on to our eighth and final question, which is as follows. What are your plans for literacy instruction? And do you have a view on transitioning from balanced literacy to structured literacy? Mary, you will respond.
Yeah, in in the course of this campaign, I've met with a lot of different people, and we've talked about a lot of different issues. And to me, probably some of the most heartbreaking discussions that I've had in the campaign have related to literacy and how how students have learned to read or not learn to read in Arlington over over the past several years. When I look at the data that parents have shared with me, these are parents on the English Language Arts Advisory Committee, it's been clear that this, the curriculum that we've had in place for several years in APS hasn't been working. There's data that goes back years that show that actually the the scores in reading achievement have been declining. And for some students, our English language students, some of our students of color, those drops have been really dramatic, and that's data unfortunately that really hasn't seen the light of day. And that, you know, we can talk about all of the ways that that's wrong. But but at its heart, that's really an injustice to students who are moving through our system and don't have literacy, which should be, it's it's the fundamental right of every student in public education. So it's been clear that that hasn't been working. When I read the APS budget, there is money in there for a new English Language Arts curriculum, which we absolutely need. But when you read the budget narrative that's attached to that, the English Language Arts Office is saying, you know, we've been using a curriculum without a research base, and we need to move in a different direction. That's heartbreaking for our students. And so I think it's beyond time that we make a change to a new to a new curriculum. I understand it's going to be very difficult because most teachers have been trained in the balanced literacy approach we have been doing, and a lot of time and a lot of money and a lot of effort have been invested in that. But I'm encouraged when I hear from teachers, like a kindergarten teacher at Carlin Springs, who reached, she reached out to email me on Sunday morning and said, you know what? I started doing reading about this, and I realized I've been doing it wrong. I've been doing it wrong, and I want to make it right. I want to switch and do this the right way. You know, and 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 when we have those those moments with our staff where they can see the benefits of making this transition, we will all be in a much, much better place. So I'm, I'm, I believe that under Dr. Duran's leadership, and he deserves a lot of credit here because he's been pushing for this since his arrival, that making this pivot will be good for all of our students. It won't be easy for our staff, but we're going to get there. And then I think we need really careful and transparent reporting of the progress we're making so that this has the light of day on it, and it's not, you know, it's not the awful secret that only certain students and families have had to bear.
Great. Thank you. Now we will hear from Miranda. Again, the question is, what are your plans for literacy instruction? And do you have a view on transitioning from balanced literacy to structured literacy?
I thank you. I think on this one, you're not going to see a lot of daylight between Mary and I. Everything that that she identified in terms of the direction that we're heading, I think I agree with, and it's really, really positive. I mean, literacy is is the the keystone, the cornerstone, the foundation of our kids' educational experience. And if kids aren't literate by a certain time, they, you know, studies show that they've got worse outcomes throughout their academic careers throughout the rest of school. And and it can have, you know, emotional effects. It can have confidence effects. If you're not a strong reader, that can that can follow you through your your entire school career. It affects your self-esteem. This is something we absolutely have to provide for our students. And I think that what we are doing right now, there has been a strong recommendation to immediately stop the use of Lucy Colkins and leveled literacy and to focus on phonemic awareness, phonics, fluency, vocabulary and comprehension. I saw this myself to some extent when when the Drew community came together. It was children from one school and children who, my children, who had been in a different school. My kids got really strong phonics instruction, and and they are strong readers. And I remember talking to other parents who were very frustrated with where their kids were reading-wise and and thought they had not been well-served by the curriculum in their old school. So yes, I think this is critical, and I think that it extends to students who have learning disabilities like dyslexia. We need to make sure we're doing the right interventions that are evidence-based, implementing them with fidelity and doing it across all school systems. Yes, it will take some time. Our teachers are used to what they're used to, but we are going to move forward on this. Our teachers are going to adapt, and it's going to be much better for our kids. I, yes, we need data on it. We need to track it. We need to make sure it's being done consistently across all schools. And yeah, I just, I think it's very important to focus on this. The NAACP wrote a letter on it recently, and they are dead on. It should not depend on being at the right school in order to learn how to read.
Great. Thanks very much, Miranda. And that concludes the question and answer session of the debate. I want to thank the candidates for that great exchange of ideas. We are now going to move to closing statements, and per our virtual coin toss, Miranda will provide the first closing statement. Miranda?
Thank you. Thank you all for the questions. Fifty is a lot, but I'm glad we got through eight. I would just want to close very briefly and say that I really think that a lot of us live in Arlington for a number of reasons, but schools are a huge one. We're really proud of our school system. And a great public school system is a very direct and critically important way to advance progressive values. It builds a a strong community. It builds bonds across generations. It creates continuity, and it prepares our kids for the workforce. These things are really, really important to everyone living here, parents and and folks who aren't parents. Right now, I think there's a sense that APS could be doing some of these things better. I think there's a sense, I have it myself, that we don't have consistent or equitable experiences or outcomes across schools for all of our kids. I think that that should change. I think there is also a sense that we're not putting our students before the system right now. There's always going to be a tension between institutional interests and running an efficient operation and meeting individual need. Right now, I'm not sure we're striking the right balance. I think we need to put our students first and do what we can, not only to remove barriers that might be impeding the ability to access a great education, but just to meet student need, just to meet them where they are and not have policies that aren't going to address individual circumstances when we can be doing better by our kids. I think we need a strong school board to oversee all of this. And I think that the school board does things like ask questions, challenge assumptions, ask about alternative, make sure the right path is chosen, and vote on that path. And I think we want to make sure the school system is working for everyone, all schools, all demographic groups, all students. Things like literacy, we've touched on a bunch, really shouldn't depend on school. Same for implementing services for students with disability, for fidelity to IEPs. It should not depend on whether you're at this school or that school, this side of the street or the other side of the street. These are issues that existed before the pandemic. They've been brought way, way, way out into the light during the pandemic, but they're not going to go away on their own. Again, being a lawyer is about bringing a specific set of skills to all manner of subject matter areas. You evaluate the information, you synthesize it, you present it in a clear manner, and you try to persuade others that you're on the right track. The other thing that's really important after a year like this is community engagement and really hearing and responding to all walks of the community, even the folks you disagree with, even the folks who don't step forward easily. Let's go out and find the voices that we're not hearing. I think moving forward, APS needs a strong school board that is committed to taking action on some of these issues, and I am. I'm not afraid to take unpopular positions that maybe may have been clear over the past year, and I'm not afraid to push issues that I think are right for our children. I'm asking for your vote to bring these skills to the role of the school board. Thank you very much for your time tonight.
So unmute before we move on to Mary's closing statement. If you're not on mute, please go on mute, but otherwise, we will hear from Mary.
Thank you, Jill. Thank you again, everyone, for the opportunity to talk with you about the school board race. During this gathering, we've covered a lot of issues, some of them immediate and some that are long-term challenges. It's important that we have elected leaders who can attend to the community's immediate concerns while in parallel tackling some of those longer-term challenges and opportunities. I've been a leader of local and national organizations, and I know how to identify priorities and measure progress against them. I believe that we can improve how APS is currently doing this and then transparently share its progress and performance with the community. I know education too. I know we can reinvent our schools and our system to be more sustainable, inclusive and accountable. As a school board member, I would hold myself and APS accountable for dismantling policies and practices that just don't work anymore, that don't deliver great return on investment and that perpetuate inequity. We can learn so much from the innovations of other school systems and states, and I'm eager to bring my firsthand experience of this to Arlington. Here's the question I've loved the most during on the campaign trail. If elected to the school board, at the end of your four-year term, what would you want to have changed in Arlington public schools? So I fast forward to January 2026, and here's what I'd like to see. Public trust and partnership, revitalized community engagement processes, representative and inclusive advisory councils that are fully leveraged, and complete transparency about our accomplishments and our shortcomings. Equity, every student is appropriately supported and challenged. We could point to policies and practices we've changed that have disadvantaged certain groups and be proud that we took action. Equity would be a shared value that we're all invested in. In 2026, I'd love to see staff satisfaction and pride. APS staff are respected. Their expertise is carefully considered in decision-making. They're fairly compensated, and they want to spend their careers working in Arlington. And reinvention. I know our immediate priority is recovering from this pandemic. But there are school systems and states out there that are seizing this opportunity to change things that have been broken for a long time, including how students demonstrate their learning and are assessed, how to create flexibility so students can move through the curriculum faster or slower as they need to, how families can partner in school decision-making and more. We can do this here too. I want every student and APS staff member to know that they're engaged in meaningful, challenging, purposeful work and to return home each day excited to come back for more. There's so much to do between now and 2026, and I'm excited to tackle all of it. If you believe we need someone with my experience, passion for public education and commitment to serve this community, I hope I'll have your vote in the caucus. Thank you.
Great. Thanks very much. That concludes our candidate debate. I want to thank both candidates again for their thoughtful remarks and for their willingness to serve in this important role for our community. I always say that school board member is the hardest job in politics, and I think that is especially true during this pandemic. So I want to do a shout out to our current school board members as well and to thank them for their service. I also want to urge all the audience members to do their community service by voting in the school board caucus. Voting will take place Monday, May 17th to Sunday, May 23rd. You can vote online at arlingtondemocrats.org/sbcaucus 24 hours per day during the entire voting period. Alternatively, you may vote in person at one of the voter assistance locations, which Arlington Democrats will staff over several days during that week. To learn more about the in-person voting assistance and the caucus in general, plus more about our candidates, please visit arlingtondemocrats.org/sbcaucus. Thank you all for attending tonight, and that concludes our event. Have a great evening.
Thank you, everyone.